The United States of America, and we are calling for which stands one nation, never die, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
We remain standing for multiple seconds. Thank you very much. Please silence your phones, pagers, other electronic devices. Round one of citizen concerns. Anything, any citizen would like to talk about that is not already on the agenda. Hearing none. I will move approval of the agenda.
Move it. Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Items three through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the February nine meeting. Four, approval of claims. Board of Supervisors number five, approval of chairman's 2021 liaison and committee assignment. Board Administration, approval of notice of property sale for parcels ending in zero one zero and zero one one, also known as nineteen eleven and nineteen thirteen, South Alice, for Tuesday, March second at four thirty-five P. M. Item seven, community and economic development. A, receive Simcoe's second quarter progress report. B, approval to set the date and time for three public hearings for the proposed zoning district map amendment for parcel ending in zero zero four, for March second at four forty-five, March nine at four forty-five, and March sixteenth at four forty-five. Item eight is human resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Any questions on any items in the consent agenda? I'll move approval. DeWitt, by, motion by DeWitt, second by Wright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Uh, we're ahead of time here. Building Services and Kenny Schmitz, can you do this inside of about three minutes? Uh, information on Sulan District Health Building.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. Um, the agenda item is to explain some modifications to the Sulan District Health Building. Um, I'm going to let Kevin Green go ahead and take over from here. Kevin, go ahead.
All right. Kevin Green, Director of Sulan District Health Department. What we have proposed in working with the Board of Health is that last year when we suspended our vaccination programs for childhood immunizations because of COVID, uh, one of the things that we deemed as a project is I challenged some staff to take a look at a ways to do a drive-through clinic. Um, that was virtually successful in getting us caught up is what it is. As we began to take a look at that, what the staff wanted to know if there was a potential, when we had an excessive need for additional immunizations to do it quickly, efficiently, and also provide the, um, safety of people be able to go within their own car, they wanted to know about the potential of some structure that would be available to be up to do a drive-through clinic process on a regular basis. So the plans that we have worked with RML Architects to put together is actually two onings. There's both the front door of the Health Department and there's also what we call the loading or the dock door. What would be constructed are two permanent onings that would come out to the edge of the parking lot. They would actually have retractable doors on the side so we would have some control of the, basically the climate. In addition to that, we would have lighting inside, ceiling fans and that. And these permanent structures then would be available, accessible, and usable by staff as we did the drive-through clinics for both the VFC program, the vaccine for children. In addition to that, would also be within the, um, annual flu campaign. And then we'll see where we're at as far as potential for construction, where we're at with the COVID vaccine administration. And so these are the plans that were developed. It's what we've put together. Um, at the approval of the Board of Health, they asked for us to move forward with getting, um, basically moving forward, uh, because the cost estimates are only cost estimates till we look at getting bids. And so they would undertake the process for doing the hearing and that, for solicitation of bids, to find out what the potential, um, overall cost of some structure like this would be, and then making the decision. And these, the funding for this would come out of Sulan District Health Department funds. And so that's really the, the scope and the intent of what we're looking at doing. Uh, we came because the, um, Health Department building is owned by the county. So we're doing our due diligence to keep you abreast, alert, and in opportunity to answer any questions you may have related to this project.
Any questions for Kevin on the project, please?
So on the funds, which, which part of your budget is that coming out of?
They would, I mean, they would come out of our general, out of our health fund is what it would be. It'd be utilization of that. So we would not plan on asking for additional tax dollars to fund this. We'd be budgeting out of that, much as we've done other building improvements up there.
Sir? We are four thirty-five?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um, that was an information item anyway, so thank you, Kevin. Uh, Board Administration, public hearing and sale of property parcel ending in zero ten, also known as four twenty-one West First Street. Uh, do we have any?
We have to have public hearing.
Yeah, look, the public hearing is now open. So if you have any comments for or against, please approach, identify yourself and your address.
Brittany Alvarez, one zero eight Sioux Street.
Okay.
And I'd like to place the minimum bid of six.
No, we're in a public hearing.
We're not ready for that yet, but do you have anything for or against that you'd like to state? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Uh, I'll second that. Motion by Monson, second by DeWitt to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. I'm sorry, you can step up now and make your first bid if you like. And you were going for?
Brittany Alvarez, minimum bid.
One zero eight Sioux Street.
Okay.
Minimum bid, six twenty-one.
Six twenty-one? Six hundred twenty-one? All right. Do we have anybody else that would like to bid on this property? Going once?
I'll move that we sell it to her for that.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Mr. Monson, to sell the property to the lady with the bid. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Thank you very much, and Karen will help you with that. All right. Mr. Green, did you have anything else you wanted to add, or has anybody got any questions for Kevin on the, on the item for the Sulan District Health?
Dennis.
Sorry.
In the case of using reserves, CIP projects should be booked through our CIP fund. And Kevin mentioned that they were going to use some of our reserves. I highly caution that. The only reason I say that because we use five hundred and some thousand this year to reduce the allocation made from general basic over to District Health. Next year, we either have to use more of the reserves, DM down to twenty percent, or we're going to have to raise taxes. That's the bottom line because we used reserves to offset taxes this year. I hate to see the board, or go ahead and, or District Health also, use more reserves for this project. The project is for a county building, and you have a couple of CIP projects. This should have been included in the CIP for the board to approve, per receivable, at least. So I would suggest that we paid out our CIP. Interest rates are very, very low right now because we were borrowing this money. But we need to protect these reserves because next year, we're going to hit pretty good with District Health because we used so much reserves this year. So it would help if we had more reserves there to offset some of the increase we're going to have for next year. That's all I have on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, do we have a, we don't have a set time to recess, but we, number eleven, we'll can recess Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Consider approval of contract with I H G, I S G, I'm sorry, for watchman services for county drainage districts.
I'm Mark Narrows, Woodbury County Engineer. Uh, we've had a contract with, uh, I S G for watchman services since, uh, twenty fifteen. In the twenty fourteen flood, uh, damage occurred on some of our drainage districts that we weren't aware of. The road department gets very busy taking care of its own problems. And, uh, something we recognized was that we needed some help going in and inspecting those drainage districts to assure that, uh, if there was damage on them, that, uh, we did what we could to make sure they were eligible for federal FEMA dollars in repairs. Um, this contract is basically the same as we looked at last time in twenty fifteen. Uh, the cost is up to ninety-two dollars an hour. They were at eighty dollars an hour and hadn't adjusted that in six years. So, uh, this contract includes a rider where they'll, uh, be going up a bit based on the salary of that individual technician position that does that work. But I recommend approval of the contract. Uh, just so the board knows, I think it was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars was, uh, gained by the Wolf Creek Drainage District in the course of the twenty eighteen, or twenty nineteen flood event, uh, by having watchman services available. And the information reports that they prepared, we were able to turn over to FEMA and, uh, get money for repairs for that district. The other districts didn't have any damage, which we also were able to ask for.
Move it.
Motion by Monson?
Second.
Second by Reddick. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Nero? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Uh, item twelve, secondary roads.
I'd move to go out of.
Oh.
The drainage district.
Sure. Let me just, yeah, the chair just to chair.
We don't have to move to go out. We just go out.
Okay. Uh, item twelve, secondary roads, approval of contract for bridge embankment repair with L.A. Carlson of Merrill for seventy-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars.
We, uh, took quotations for this work. Uh, the work was awarded to, uh, L.A. Carlson. I recommend approval of their contract.
I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Reddick. Any other comments? Mark, any follow-up on this that you need to know about?
Shouldn't be.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Item, uh, twelve B, approval of contract and bond with Dixon Construction for replacement of three bridges totaling two million forty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, we had, as I reported, um, two weeks ago, we had two bidders on this project. Uh, we're recommending award of the low bid to Dixon Construction of Correctionville, Iowa.
I'll move it. Motion by Reddick, second by DeWitt. Any other, that just sounds like such a big amount because we're doing three at a time, right?
Yes, there's three bridges in this project. Uh, it would be the first bridge south of, uh, uh, U.S. Twenty on the Mobile Blacktop. It would be just north of one hundred and sixtieth Street. The other bridge is just north of D thirty-eight on County Route L thirty-six south of Correctionville. That's Osceola Avenue. Uh, the third bridge is in Lyon County. And, uh, part of the provisions of the program that this, these bridges were led under is that bridges be bundled in groups of, you know, two and up to four or more. Um, Lyon County was lacking a partner and they were assigned to us. So, uh, we are administering a contract for Lyon County as well.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Sorry with the chair. I'll bring all this stuff up to sign after the meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I have to leave at five-thirty, so.
Okay.
Just in case you might want to bring it up and.
I'll get everything marked up then.
Okay. All right.
Staff.
Or, I'll be here in the morning if you want to do it, and I'll be here in the morning and for another meeting.
Okay. Um, the one, the, uh, three, the contracts are actually electronically signed. It's just the, uh, contracts with the consultants and the, uh, resolution to give me authorization to sign on behalf of the board. That's your next item.
Okay. Uh, item C, authorized chairman to sign the resolution directing county engineer to electronically sign the contract and bond.
I'll move that.
Motion by Reddick, second by Wright. Any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, we now all do, do all of these projects that are let through DOT with a software package called Doc Express. Rather than having our chair go through the pains of getting his, uh, electronic signature established, the, uh, um, State Attorney's Office has determined that with the dispensation of this resolution, that the county engineer can sign on behalf of the board. I already have to sign official documents, so it doesn't put the chair each year through that, uh, background check.
That was an adventure, that first year.
That was, yeah. I think it took us three or four tries before we finally got it right.
You couldn't, uh, sign your name?
Oh. I, I had to invent two new cuss words to be able to sign my, with that, with that, with that new electronic signature thing, Mr. Onstel. Yeah, I, I can sign my name. It just hurts. Um, did we vote on that yet, Pat?
No, you have not.
We did get a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Approval of, uh, item twelve D, approval of contract with Calhoun Burns and Associates for bringing s- bridge inspection for calendar year twenty twenty-one.
Um, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-six bridges that are due for inspection this year. Uh, prices, a hundred and twenty-five dollars each. And then they have, uh, attached prices for, uh, or I guess that's low rating computations, a hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-four cents each. Um, we're required to inspect all of our bridges on a two-year, uh, re-inspections. Some of them we have to do every year because of deteriorated condition and needing to monitor whether or not those bridges are, uh, accelerating in deterioration. So I recommend approval of their contract.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Monson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. Uh, item thirteen, county attorney, consideration for sale of county land and/or property located within the Prairie Hills area.
Yes, um, just want to put a disclaimer on that. I am not advocating for the sale of this land. I was just asked to get it on the agenda, so that was basically, uh, my task that I accomplished. So just wanted to start out with that. Uh, I'm a city boy, know nothing about farmland, so.
Can you get that to Mr. Nero? Thank you. Oh, there he is. Any questions for Mr. Jennings on the, on the land sale and how we have it ordered and so forth?
I guess, are we just dividing it into the two parcels? Is that?
That, that was the suggestion. I mean, the board can do whatever they want to do. There was some thought process, and I don't know where you guys, you guys being the Board of Supervisors, there is those two, actually two separate pieces, um, that could be separated if you choose to do so. You can do anything you want to, but the suggestion was that you were going to sell them as just two parcels.
Do we have like a broker or real estate dealer dealing with this?
Uh, we had it appraised and we got the report back. And I think partially that's where some of the two parcel sale was recommended.
I believe so. I believe that was part of the discussion. I don't know if anybody made any definitive.
Right. We just received basically the appraisal at the time and, um, did you have something, Matthew?
Um, is the motion required simply just to, uh, sell, or do we need to specify who we're going to use, or how many, or do we need, also need to specify in two parcels?
I think what you need to do, I think the first thing that needs to be, um, decided is if you are actually going to sell the property. Um, if you do that, then you need to decide, all right, is it going to be two parcels, three parcels, one parcel, however you want to do it. Um, and then how you're going to conduct the sale. I believe are the three most important questions. The fourth being throughout this sale, and I'm not sure if it needs to be decided today, but at some point, the board needs to decide whether you're going to put a floor on the sale so that you're guaranteed you will receive at least the amount that you, um, desire, and whether you're going to make that known ahead of time or not.
It's not required to make that known ahead of time?
No.
Okay.
I do know, as I said, on the appraisal side of things, he said he recommends the two parcels and putting a floor on, on auctioned amount essentially.
Basically a reserve?
Right.
Yeah.
So this would be an auction?
Yes.
I would be inclined.
That's the suggested route to go. But that's not the only route to go, but that's the suggested route to go.
For today, what's on the agenda, I think you just need to consider whether or not you're going to sell the property.
Well, then I would move to sell the property.
I'd second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Monson, to proceed with the sale of the property. All those in, or any other questions or, sir?
Yeah, I'm in support of the sale, um, for reasons already stated, but, um, we've been advised, and I think it's common sense as well, that we really need to, uh, attempt to complete this at least by, by March, um, given the seasons. If we can't receive an appropriate amount for this, then unfortunately it may have to be some we look at next year. But we should definitely try and, try and put it up, uh, this year and see where it goes.
As our real estate licenses have all expired, I would say that we wait until we have somebody that would manage the sale of this before we decide one or two parcels and what the floor ought to be. Uh, that, I mean, they do that for a living, so they would have the best knowledge of how to do it.
Have, uh, you been provided with the appraisal, Mr. Monson?
No.
The land also still needs to be surveyed as well for exact legal description.
Okay. Uh, Pat, there's nothing to prevent us from supplying the appraisal if Mr. Monson is there?
There's, there's one in my mail slot. He can.
Okay.
Look at mine or take mine for the time being.
Yeah, that'll answer a lot of questions.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Does the Sheriff's Department want to hang on to any of that land?
Well, they're going to keep the buildings.
Is there a portion of that that is, for the sake of you guys doing business the way that you want to do your business, to hold on to an acre or two or five?
Existing buildings that are there now.
Sheriff Sheehan, just for clarification, the, the buildings that are there now will still remain there, correct? We're not talking about the land that encompasses the, the range, the new training center, or the, or the garages.
Farm ground only.
Okay. Which is that, and just for clarification, is that to the south of the, of the range?
South and east.
South.
South and.
East of it, okay.
And that's why I asked the question, if you want a little bit to hang on to that as a buffer for any particular reason?
Um, well, I mean, it begs a question about what's going to eventually happen with the, the old county home. And if, if that, is that land part of the sale? It's not. So if something were to eventually be done with that home where it was, you know, taken down and that land were available to add buildings or whatever, that, that would probably suffice, you know, as far as land area that we would need. Um, we are looking at, and I've talked to Dennis, uh, several weeks ago, we are looking at maybe trying to figure out, uh, adding a building, uh, that will just be a, uh, a skeletal structure where we can use it to move, uh, walls internally for training purposes. Um, and also will allow us to maybe bring in some of the trainings that we'd like to, uh, make the training center more of a regional training center. But I think the land that would be available should be sufficient, so long as none of that's part of that, that, that sale.
That's the per, that's the old county home there, and this is going to stay with it. Uh, out here, right here. So, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Nay. Passes four to one. DeWitt opposed.
Mr. Chair, you had a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Gary Walters. I live at fifty-five oh four Wild Rose Lane, and I just have one simple question. Is the information in the appraisal of the farm available to the general public? Is that public information?
It's not.
Because right now it's not.
Okay. Will it, will it become, or is that a board decision, or?
In cases of, uh, land sale acquisition or anything like that, um, we're always encouraged to use closed sessions and not make any of that information public. So.
That information, uh, will become public after the sale of the property, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, item fourteen, Sheriff Sheehan, information on how Woodbury County Sheriff's Office is paying for new ceramic inserts for the SWAT team.
Good afternoon, uh, Sheriff Sheehan. Also with me is Chief Deputy, uh, Tony Winger. Uh, Tony's been working, uh, Chief Winger has been working with, um, Sergeant Brad Rose, who is our SWAT team leader, on, uh, replacing the current ceramic plates that our SWAT team is using. Uh, the chief has the existing ones and then also the, the updated ones that, uh, we're looking at purchasing. And I'm going to let the chief explain the, the details since he's the one.
This is due to, uh, you guys talking earlier about, uh.
They put, this, where does this go?
Uh, it goes in the front and one in the back. They wear both of them. They wear two of them. Uh, but that's the old one. The new one, the new one's coming right, right now. Um, we have thirteen members of the SWAT team, and so it's, we're looking at about ten thousand dollars to, uh, get this done. Um, those, the, the heavy ones were bought in two thousand and seven. They're, they're supposed to be good for five years. Those new ones, they're warranted for fifteen years. So they're a little bit more expensive than, uh, older ceramics, but they last longer. Anyway, I'm getting in the weeds. We have four members that are out on military leave right now. They've been gone for, coming up on twelve months. We ran the numbers and since July, at last, beginning of last fiscal year to December, it's seventy-nine thousand dollars that the county has not spent, uh, because it's sitting there. They, they don't get paid. They get paid for thirty days and then they don't get, their money sits there, their wages. They're not getting, gathering wages.
How much does overtime eat up of that?
That's a good question. I talked to Jennifer today and she says that we are right on target with our overtime expenditures. I, I don't have an exact number.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's a half or third.
I asked that if we were running heavy, uh, or anything like that, and she said we were, we're not.
Okay.
Um, anyway, I'd like to take ten thousand dollars out of that seventy-seven, move it to buy those and solve this problem for the next fifteen years that we don't need ceramic inserts. So I just wanted to do a little show and tell because I was shocked at, uh, the weight difference, uh, on, on those. And the protection, actually, the lighter ones provide one level up more protection than, uh, the heavier ones. So this is, I just wanted to bring it to you. I, I went to Dennis thinking I was going to have to sell this, and Dennis said it'd be for information to let you guys know what we're doing with it. So that's, that's what I wanted to do. Am I wrong, good, Dennis? Okay.
Wasn't your budget total?
You guys keep moving things in a hurry, so I'll get out of it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, where we at? Where did my? Are we at, all right, thank you. All right, Board of Supervisors, I have an information item here to consider for future action, making Woodbury County a Second Amendment, Sanctuary County, Second Amendment safe haven, whatever you wish to call it. But, uh, this has been something that's been going on in hundreds and hundreds of counties. Some states are completely Second Amendment positive, if you will, in that the consideration is should some constitutional or some other violation of the Constitution, if you will, be imposed, that Woodbury County does not participate in any way via funds, assistance through the sheriff's office, assistance in jail space, assistance in office areas, and manpower, any of that kind of thing. So that is basically my proposal. It has absolutely nothing to do with giving felons firearms. It does not do anything to change current or existing firearms laws regarding possession by felons, criminals, that kind of thing. It does not violate nor negate background checks of any way, shape, or form. The only thing that this resolution would do would be to say that Woodbury County will not provide funds nor services nor manpower to press this into what we would call gun confiscation. So at this time, I'm thinking there's probably some people here. Does any board member have any questions or comments?
Uh, where is the, uh, resolution? Where is the resolution wording from, or did you come up with it yourself?
No, it it was a sample that would came from a county in Michigan. And I tried to apply it as as possible and appropriate for Woodbury County and our current. Stand by, please.
That's fine, you can go ahead.
Anybody else on the board?
I guess as far as what what are we looking to? Is there gonna be any teeth in any of this, is it just gonna be just a?
It would it would it would not be an ordinance, it would be a resolution, and with that said, there are counties and jurisdiction moving forward with, they would actually arrest on the county level any federal agent that tried to come in and do any of these confiscations or enforce anything that was deemed unconstitutional. So no, this would be a resolution as far as teeth or punishment, it would have none, it would just be the resolve from the Board of Supervisors that no no county funding, no county manpower would be used in aiding and abetting any gun confiscation.
Who would determine that it is unconstitutional?
That could be determined by courts, probably by the county attorneys. There are also some sheriff's offices that have self-proclaimed that they will not aid and abet in a similar in a similar situation. Remembering that, the Constitution belongs to the individuals, the citizens of the country, it does not belong to the government to mandate or take away what we have. The first three lines of the United States Constitution are we the people. The Constitution was ratified by the people, not by the government. Do we have a caller on the line?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, so I would like to address the board, my name is Jackie Spelish, I live in Sioux City. I'd like to, can everybody, well, can you hear me okay?
Yes, and let me remind you that we, for brevity of time, and this is an information item only, it is not an action item. I will ask you to limit it to three minutes, please.
Oh, absolutely, yep, not a problem. So I'd like to address the Board of Supervisors in Woodbury and share that the vast majority of Americans support common sense gun laws that keep our families safe. And instead of passing resolutions with no impact on state or local law, I would ask you to focus on solutions that can keep our families safe in Woodbury County. I think resolutions known as Second Amendment sanctuary counties don't actually carry any weight, however, do cause confusion, foster distrust in law enforcement, and many may deter people from reporting individuals who may hurt themselves or others. These resolutions would not serve to protect us and aren't in line with the vast majority of voters who support common sense gun laws, like background checks on all gun sales and red flag laws. One hundred people die from gun violence every day in this country and hundreds more are wounded. In an average year, according to the CDC, in Iowa, two hundred and eighty-one people die by guns. With a rate of eight point seven deaths per one hundred thousand people, Iowa has the forty-third highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. Our elected and appointed leaders like you have an obligation to ensure that law enforcement authorities enforce the law, particularly those laws that help keep us safe from gun violence. I'll continue to advocate for common sense gun laws and work with you guys and law enforcement to keep our communities safe. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Do we have another caller on the line? Do we have another caller on the line, please?
Excuse me?
Do we have a second caller?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, can you limit it to three minutes, please?
Am I too talk now or?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, my name is Jan Olson, I'm calling. I'm calling into. Yes, it's me. I would like to visit with you. Yes, I certainly may, I would like to visit. I would like to visit with you. I'm calling about.
Ma'am, we can hear you if you just express your opinion, please.
Sounds like there's somebody else talking to her.
I think she's talking to herself, she's getting the echo.
I.
Mr. Auditor, any ideas?
Jan, can you hear me? Just ask her to read her statement.
Ma'am, can you read your statement and hopefully we can hear you and finish up with your portion?
Sounds like we lost her.
Okay, I'm going to consider, does anybody else agree that we should consider her call is dropped or?
Is she still on as far as you can tell, Karen?
Do we have any other public input from those in the gallery?
Dwayne Hoffmeyer, Chief Judge, Third Judicial District, I just would honor to make sure whether it would impact our court security all at all.
No, this has.
Well, and and so what I've seen from time to time, so I just glanced, usually when the courts get involved, it's felon in possession of a firearm, their firearms are usually seized, somebody convicted of domestic abuse, their firearm and ammunitions are typically seized. Those found seriously mentally ill are ineligible for firearms. So that's where the court gets involved, and usually law enforcement in some of those situations would seize and then they forfeit the firearm. And, you know, that sometimes comes to the court for those purposes, and so so are you suggesting then that the court would not or should not do those gun forfeitures under those those situations?
No, 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 this has no bearing on on the gun forfeitures, the gun the gun issues with something adjudicated or or or, you know, simply as course of action of of everyday law enforcement, as in domestic orders and those kind of things. No, this has no bearing on those whatsoever.
Well, then I would only say, and you can do whatever you'd like, is sometimes there's enough confusion of what one can and cannot do. You know, I found a unfortunate situation where a young man got a hunting license and then he was caught with a firearm and he had a domestic abuse conviction. And so, you know, you can get a hunting license, you think you're good to go, and then bad things happen. And all I'm saying is be cautious and however you go, because it may leave somebody to believe that they have the ability to do something, that then there will be consequences to them. And as well, but my primary focus was court security, and if we're okay there, then.
No, I've chatted with Sheriff Sheehan on this, this has this has no bearing, we consider that, or I consider it a completely separate issue as far as court security, because there's a standalone statute. I don't remember the code, but it's there, we've been we've been told actually, I should say court security's been told that there's a there's an individual that might try and bring a firearm in, and court security will be telling them that this is the law, this is not as we as security is here, you are not to bring a firearm in, so no, this has no bearing on that whatsoever.
Well, then I would just say from a legal, be careful whether this somehow gives that person greater credibility than they might otherwise have.
Understood.
It's it's your call.
Thank you.
And Your Honor, just just to clarify, that was that was the one concern that I brought up with Chairman DeWitt when when I saw the the resolution was to make sure that it didn't affect the courthouse security in any way, and I was given that assurance that that was not the intent, I did meet with the county attorney to make sure that we don't create a slippery slope where where that will become a question later.
Well, I would welcome, excuse me, but I, no, no, stay right there, I'm just saying, I would welcome any input on on language that would help alleviate that. Because I know the intent is one thing.
I'm unable to give you legal advice, you have somebody that.
Well, I'm not.
But I'm just saying, and I apologize, I didn't get a chance to read the resolution, but I've seen there's a wide variety of them. I mean, they can range from law enforcement choosing not to to enforce gun laws, you know, they could, you know, whether you as somebody who's authorized to sell firearms, you know, would would, does that change anything? Well, you know, there's federal consequences, you know, and so it's just a matter of what purpose do you accomplish and.
I wouldn't do good in prison, so no, I'm not going to.
And and so I'm just saying, words matter and they are important and you don't want to get yourself in a worse situation. And and if it's not affecting law enforcement, it's not affecting court security, you know. Is it any greater than what's already granted and, you know, why is it needed? I understand lots have done it, but it all depends on the words and how you go, so I understand that.
Thank you.
PJ Dennis, County Attorney's Office, I just want to make sure I understand this is informational, but if my memory serves me correct, the Board of Supervisors passed a motion, I believe, which was to allow guns into the courthouse, based on House five 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 seventeen. And then that's when we had the arguments back and forth with the courts. So if we go down this road, I would just ask that the board clean that up if it is indeed the intent that courthouse security is to keep guns out of the courthouse.
It's my understanding that that's what they are there for, so yes.
Dwayne Hoffmeyer, so I did have to review my notes and just refresh my memory here. So currently, the Woodbury County Courthouse and all of the counties of the Third Judicial District are operating under the court security of then Chief Justice Mark Cady. And the most recent of his orders allowed for counties to opt out, and then you could cipher out where guns were permitted and where they were not. Woodbury County originally elected to opt out of that. And then I prepared what that would look like for enforcement, and then my notes show that on February twentieth of twenty eighteen, I received a, or there was a motion, agenda item authored by Supervisor Taylor, where you withdrew that request to opt out. And so then then that's the way we've been operating since twenty seventeen. So to the extent there was a question of where where are we, that's where I understand we are at at present. And that's for all of the sixteen counties of the Third Judicial District, same situation as you're in, nobody, no one opted out, so.
Any other comments from the board?
Is it my, I think I heard this. What this is saying is that somebody in a higher position, state or federal, changed something by law this that we didn't like, this would give this county the right to not follow that law. Is that what I heard?
It would give the county the right to not help enforce an unconstitutional law.
Yeah, but that goes back to who determines it's unconstitutional.
Well, it.
PJ.
What if PJ disagrees with?
And I do disagree with with that, so put that out.
Disagree with what?
Having a sanctuary county, Woodbury County, I don't think we have an issue here, I believe one of the board, the supervisors in the past has has made the statement that we're we're suggesting a solution in search of a problem versus vice versa. I think that's what we're doing here with this.
Well, this was an information item, I looks like I need to do some different consideration or some other.
Rocky?
Yes, sir.
A caller is back.
Okay, Jackie, we're ready.
Oh, hello?
Please speak.
Yes, hi, so I am, I'm calling in again, I had shared my information earlier. It does seem to me like the actual wording of the resolution is an area of concern because some of these, the way they're worded, they're just resolutions, they're just declarations to support the Second Amendment, but others have criminal penalties against people who enforce gun violence laws. And is there somewhere where we can actually see how this resolution would be worded?
I have it right here in front of me, I would be glad to leave one for you at the board office or or email it to you or some such.
Yeah, is that who, was that was that Supervisor DeWitt?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I actually, oh, yes, and I did email you, so you could email me the wording of that resolution, I would absolutely appreciate that.
I would be happy to.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Any other callers? As this is an information item and we are under a time constraint that I need to leave, we're on to item fifteen B, review of letter of understanding regarding the current LEC and future use of property, that is. Dennis, do you have some things you want to explain on that, too?
Well, this this was put together, the suggestion of the mayor, Bob Scott, and also working with Rocky here a little bit, that we're addressing two different issues here. One is what we're gonna do with the LEC once we have moved out. In this case here, this is actually a letter of understanding that eighteen months after we move out, that it will be demolished and that for a dollar, we will turn it over to the city for them to further develop into a taxable property. They actually have the department over there, you know, bigger than what we have here, and it's in a Tiff district, so development probably should be with the city. Also, the remedial work of all the DNR pollutants over there, we're down to a level now where DNR has basically stated that we could potentially build a, tear it down, put a garage in there or a basement at the level it is currently. They suggest a couple little things we could do to make it a little safer, but right now, their opinion is, and they won't put it in writing, obviously, but their opinion is we can build, or whoever gets it can put a basement there and go up with it. There is still an issue with the water well, and I, Kenny can address some of this if he'd like to, with the Pioneer Bank that we still have to monitor. So even though we would, you know, transfer over to the city, we would still be responsible for DNR requirements as stated in this letter. So that resolves that, that kind of puts, you know, what we're gonna do with this building once we're out of it. The second part of it is the city has asked the county to share one-third in the Elk Creek Road project out there, it's gonna have a twenty proposed twenty, one hundred and twenty-two residential lots built with an average value of two hundred and fifty thousand. Right now, our county engineer is actually doing the specs for the grading of it. You know, we've agreed to do that, and then the actual making the road where you could pour concrete on, that'll be up to the developer to do that. So actually, the concrete work probably won't start until they actually get buildings out there, houses, and that'd probably be possibly, according to Mark, our engineer, anywhere from two to four years. But this is actually making a commitment that we'd share the cost, one-third with the city, county, and the developer, and there was a potential of another developer out there potentially maybe chiming in on this. The road would be maintained by the city, right now, all this is out in the world, it's being annexed into the city. It's very similar to what we did with Quister Creek, where we built the road for three hundred thousand, the city annexed it in, but what we gained from the investment is all the residential properties and retail that's being built around this area. So, you know, they're asking, and it's a good investment by the county, like I say, we'll be paying just part of the paving, not the grading, anything like that. So that's pretty much in a nutshell what this is.
I know you're limited on time, so I'll be quick. As far as the LEC building goes and the DNR and the remediation and everything else, if that building were removed and another, let's just say that property was purchased by another entity who wished to build on it, that could be done, as Dennis said. One thing I'd like to keep in mind, or the board to keep in mind, is even if that takes place, there is going to have to be an ongoing monitoring well on that property somewhere, possibly in an alley, that will that will need to be remain, that will need to remain there and still be monitored into the future, which we require by the DNR. there and still be monitored into the future, which we require by the DNR. And that is required until such time that the Pioneer Bank no longer pulls water from that aquifer. The reason those rights don't get turned over to Pioneer Bank, for instance, which would be the only person drawing from that aquifer at that time, is because the remediation project is a state project, that is a state Woodbury County remediation project. And I brought this up because the funds for that project are almost completely expended. There was $1 million for that project. It's getting very close to the million dollars at this point. So, if there's future monitoring that needs to take place, the county will be responsible for those expenditures and maybe some discussion should be had with Pioneer Bank to see if they are interested in some other method of heating or cooling their building so they don't have to pull from that aquifer anymore. Or if they still are interested in pulling from that aquifer, maybe some of that responsibility or costs should be crossed to them, to them in some manner. Thank you.
It seems to me, though, in this, they kind of expect it to be like the ground dug up and replaced with new dirt. That seems like what maybe the city's expectation is.
Well, it's not, it's not necessarily expected, only if it's necessary. They'll take it over as soon as the DNR gives it their approval and the city will accept whatever the DNR says. If it's acceptable to the DNR, then the city will take it.
Okay. So, we'll just have to excavate?
So, we may or may not have to excavate, yes, but it's not, it's not guaranteed that we will.
Sure.
There's some thinking that, that just the actual removal of the building and we'll let that naturally aerate, aspirate, if you will, to atmosphere and it'll be so minimal that we won't have to worry about it. There seemed to be some optimism on that from that meeting that I think Kenny was in on.
I am curious that it's just used for heating and cooling and yet that, it's not their drinking water.
No, it's not used for drinking. As far as I know, Pioneer Bank is just using it probably just for cooling.
But it seems like, why would that matter if that had low-level contamination or not?
That would be a DNR question, but it matters to them.
Yeah, it's a DNR thing and that'd be up to them.
Given the signature lines, has the council voted on this memorandum?
No, once we approve it, I think they're going to have it on, I think, the 22nd, the day before we have ours, but I'll double check that. And the last, on the third page there, you'll notice there's a $375,000 additional cost toward the jail. That is just there for information. It'll actually be a separate agreement with City, Sioux City, and authority on that part there. And the city attorney is drawing that up, which will be reviewed by our attorney.
So, the question is, we're going to give them this property, but all in all, they gave us a bunch of property and this is all going to balance out?
Well, we're paying for the property out of the jail for the new LEC centers being built.
But that's also a part of a package that they're going to do the paving of the road and provide the utilities too.
It's 2.8 million, but they're using 900,000 to help offset some of the paving projects and engineering costs for the 28th street. There was a water problem out there, but they didn't do that and their CIP for next year or this coming year to fix that for us. So, it's a give and take.
Yep.
And it's balancing out good and...
But it does not raise the cost of our 2.8 or the land price that we're taking. They're going to observe the water project into up to 375,000 on that parcel.
Say, example, if the building's, you know, estimated 45 million to build, it comes in a bid of, say, 46 or 47, bill pays an additional up to 375,000 to help offset some of that over there. You know, hopefully, we don't get to that point, but when you bid out, we'll know. Now, it's just a hypothetical number I just threw out.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, one thing that's going to get missed if it's not brought up is that working together on these kind of things is creating development here in Woodbury County and Sioux City. So, in this agreement, we have the development of the property across the street. Could be $30 million in development, could be $50 million. The development out, you know, southeast of town, Elk Creek, what's that going to be valued at?
When you take 120 lots times 250,000, obviously, they'll probably do like the Quister Creek, give some tax rebates or tax reasons for a few years, but you also have the other side of the road, it's going to be maybe two or three times bigger than that happen. So, you could be talking $50 million worth of property out there as the other side might include retail. So, per investment, 133,000, the return could be much greater and they will not tip it.
So, in all this, I mean, I think you're looking at maybe a minimum of $80 million of new taxable value for Woodbury County in, you know, five to 10 years or more.
Yep.
So, this is a great deal, this is good to work together with the City, Sioux City on this.
Any estimate on demolition costs?
If somebody lands at it, we're talking maybe half a million, but again, that'll be bid out.
Well, that's a lot of money, but if it was the make or break for a new jail and that was the only thing on the agenda, I think we'd take it.
That's not a lot of money for that building, if that's the number.
So, the proposal is to come back next week to have this formally approved. I will check with the city, see when they're going to have it on their agenda, if they're going to have it on next week also.
It's not like we'd be raising a wonderful building, correct, Tony? So...
We're going to raise a wonderful building in its place, though. Thank you for that layout.
We'll give that to the city. Any other comments on this information item? Moving on, 15C, Discussion Regarding the Upcoming Retirement and Replacement of Woodbury County Treasurer, Mr. One of Ninety-Nine Michael Clayton.
Rocky?
Sir?
I know that you're short for time here. I just want to make the board aware of legislation that just was filed today that is going to be good upon enactment. And I'm just going to say that you probably should run this by the county attorney to, for what the impact is going to be. Because the bill changes the period of appointment for a person appointed to fill a vacancy in an elected county office from the next pending election until the next general election. Petitions requesting special action to fill the vacancy, the bill requires a petition to be circulated and filed within 14 days after the appointment. The bill requires signatures on a petition to be dated on or after the date of the appointment. And the bill repeals the prohibition on the special election to fill a vacancy and a county elected official being held the same day as the school election. This is legislation that is, has legs. It's going to be considered and it will throw a lot of confusion into what you're discussing at this point.
Jeff?
Firstly, I'd like to see us have some interview process, not just... I appreciate you coming up with a person that's qualified that you would recommend, but I still think, you know, we should put a notice that we will fill this petition if we're going to do that. We have 40 days to do it, from my understanding, from the date of resignation. But I think we should have a process where we maybe take applications and, you know, come up with our pick from those people that would like to do that.
I would agree with that. I think this is quite a bit different from the previous circumstance on the board. We're, you know, we're talking about one of five in that case. In this case, we're talking about the one of one in the office there, so, and also not a former elected official as far as the recommendation Mr. Clayton made.
You know, Mike, you carry that bag around all the time and I can't help but think there's money in there.
No, I'm going back. The only thing I would say, and I didn't, I didn't hear at all what, my hearing's lousy, that's, that's why I'm getting out here, I'm old and I can't hear anymore, all kinds of things. But anyway, I don't know what you said about the stuff. But anyway, the reason I made that suggestion is, is I worked 20 years up in the treasurer's office to get that department where it's at today, which I think I would put it up against any treasurer's office in State Iowa, we have one of the best there is. I just wouldn't want anybody walking in there. That's why I made a suggestion of the individual I did.
Well, and I know the person you suggested is a quality human being, I know him pretty well. It's just I, it's not a temporary, you know, if Jeremy comes back in three months, comes back, Mark's gone, you know, I mean, that's...
I can misbehave all I want.
That's right. Where this might be, you know, a year and nine months or a year and eight months or so, so it's...
Correct.
That's all I had to say on it.
Any, well, I know this looks like we need to kind of hit the ground running and get something figured out.
Okay.
Your effective date was what again?
April 2nd.
April 2nd, so 40 days from there, we got to have somebody sworn in.
He had all kinds of time.
Yep.
All right. That is the last of the information items. I am restricted from doing anything further. I will hand it over to Vice Chairman Nung and be here in the morning. You're going to be here this afternoon, there's a meeting in the morning.
Which one? I'll let you know.
I will be, so if you're not, that's okay. Thank you.
Migrate to the center chair. I don't think there was, but was there any further comment on the last information item? All right, hearing none. And we're at reports on committee meetings.
I got some. I wish I could have got this in before Nara left, but I received a call from Wayne Johnson from AGP and he wanted to make sure that Mark knew that the secondary roads people have been keeping Port Neal open for service and they really appreciate what they do out there on the roads. He wanted to make sure those guys knew that they were appreciated. Second one, I attended the Conservation Board. They are going to go ahead with Brown's Lake in the project that they have, and I don't remember, they're going to bond for that or something. It's not tax money more than they get, right?
Right, they're going to use conservation reserve funds, but they'll probably have to bond through the county.
Right, and they're going to do it.
Include our CIP will be a separate bond paid by revenue from conservation.
And they want to get it over. They don't want to piecemeal Brown's Lake, just do the whole thing. So, they'll be coming in with that. Also, the Little Sioux Park, they're going to hold off on at your recommendation, tell it fits into the CIP.
Because that'll be a tax for next year, it's a little more determined, you know, after July.
Very impressed, they have a strategic plan that they're following down to the word. It's great. I met with Kenny and Shane and they went through the jail virtually with me on teams and, boy, that's a project, I love it. Also, this morning, I attended the Soil and Water Conservation District and they have a five-year soil and water plan that they're following. Mr. Gary Walder is on that board. They are a very tight ship, they're pinching the pennies like crazy. There is a project they're looking to do which will be behind the Fairway Store on Outer Belt Drive. It's called a high tunnel and it's sort of like a greenhouse, but it will support all the activities on that piece of ground, feeding the animals, gardening, all the good stuff. And I'm sure you'll hear more about that. They will be coming, or have been, to request 39,000 for the inspection of all of the waterways and watersheds in the district. And that's really important. That's been going on for years. We need to know what those structures look like and how they're doing. We've got some watersheds that are very big and somebody needs to keep track of that. So, I know before I went out on a number of field trips with Louie and we looked at all those structures that were failing. Gary, you want to say anything?
Other than to thank you for attending the meeting virtually today and it sounds like you'll be doing that more in the future, which is great. So, no, we just appreciate the board's support in the watershed inspection job and Mark is right, it's a critical element in this county to keep an eye on those structures and make sure that Mother Nature, that we stay ahead of her. So, thank you, Mark, for your interest in attending our meeting and for everything that you'll do in the future. Thank you.
Done, all right.
Any other reports?
I have a couple here.
Okay.
Workforce Development Board. So, we've been moving along, it was the 21-county, three-region consolidation into one board. We're getting a lot of things uniform as far as benefits to different types of workers. And one thing that we had cleared up that was something that I thought was frustrating here in our region is that, you know, we make cover for somebody to be a photographer even though it's not an in-demand job. Then, so they just started doing everything, including cosmetology and massage therapy and everything, even though it's not necessarily the workforce needs for your community. Well, that's now been clarified and for future workforce development funds, it has to be for things not related to those, so jobs in demand and, you know, welders or whatever it is that the market in this region needs. We did have that comp plan meeting with Simcoe to work on the county comp plan. That was our first kind of kickoff meeting. Mark was there, Gary Brown, a few other, Chad was there, Sheriff Sheehan, sorry, I got to get used to saying that. We did kind of a strength/weakness SWAT analysis, which was kind of interesting. But later on that night, I went to the Farm Bureau meeting. Since I was the only one there, I just blamed you guys for everything bad. That's a joke. No, the, I asked them the same thing on the strengths and weaknesses in Woodbury County and I was really surprised how similar the responses were, almost to a T. You know, the quality of, you know, major thoroughfares, Highway 20 came up, quality of county parks came up, having a 24-hour EMS came up. All those things came up, you know, from our Farm Bureau as well. And then on the weaknesses, it was broadband connectivity and cell service being uniformed throughout Woodbury County. So, that was interesting that those were pretty much kind of some of the things that we had through that Simcoe meeting. And that is all I got for you.
Thank you for attending the Farm Bureau meeting.
It was a cold, cold night.
I bet. Did they have any lack of attendance?
No, it's pretty well attended. It was 11 below when I got in the car, so. And they had it at the fire station there so that everyone was distanced.
Yeah, a lot of times they talk to us about the spring thaw, but we're not there yet.
In our minds, maybe.
Winter freeze. Any other reports?
Is Mark Nara over there?
Yeah.
Please pass that on to your folks.
I will.
All right.
Item 17, any citizen concerns? No. 18 board concerns? Hearing none, move on to item 19, which is our budget review discussion for the FY22 budget. Two items here, the first is the final budget review. Dennis, would you walk us through the handout you have in our agenda back up?
Yes. In this agenda item here, the proposed tax rates for fiscal year '22 for the funds aboard kin control, which is general basic, general sub, rural basic...
of board can control, which is general basic, general sup, rural basic, we are a flat tax rate, it might vary by a little less, like four tenths of one hundredths of a percent cent, which is minimal. Our county services, there was a couple adjustments made, we also held the line there. So between the four tax funds, somewhat we can control the board, that we're staying a flat tax rate. The only tax rate increase we're gonna have is the one that's voted on by the taxpayers, is the debt service for the county jail, and the board has made some progress toward helping try to reduce that this fiscal year and next fiscal year. You know, depends what happens with the farm, we can adjust that, you know, it's the board's desires. On a proposed tax asking, we are actually below 2% on four funds. The only reason we're high on the debt service is because of the jail. It's a major project. So, you know, with the tax asking and the tax, proposed tax asking, the rate's flat and the tax asking is under 2%, so when we have the second part here, when we get to B, we'll have that notice publication for March 9th, maximum property tax asking. What that does, locks us in to our property tax asking, we can ask for next fiscal year, but you always have options, you can reduce it at the public hearing by further cuts potentially, or additional revenues potentially. Now, for example, if the, say, the farm sale doesn't go through right away, if it goes into, say, April or something, we can still reduce our tax asking right up to about June 1st. So we have some leeway there. We haven't received the second payment, which is item number four down below, of 500 and approximately 61,000, that's supposed to be coming probably in the next few days, that's the second relief COVID scares, that the governor released 17 million, our share was 561,000, then I divided it out to the various funds, which we suggest we put back in reserves because we got items next fiscal year might come up, or one-time expenditures such as paying off the training facility, potentially using the 133,000 of our reserves, one-time expenditure for this Elk Creek Road. Gaming revenues on the second page, five, that just gives you an idea of how much revenue that's still unobligated, that the board really needs to have available to them for potential walk-ins throughout the next 18 months, 15 months, they might need money. We have that every once in a while. And the last one is, just showed the county tax base increase.
What was the residential rollback again?
What was that, 55.5, I believe, something like that, yes. We gained a little bit on that, but not very much. So that's where we're at with the budget. Any questions? I say you can make any changes at the public hearing. Also, the compensation board will be approved at that point in time. That's about it on the first part of this.
So it's pretty much like exactly what we said the jail would probably run the first year?
Yes.
Cause I think the projections we gave everybody over a year ago was about 63 cents to the levy year one.
Yep.
Uh, because we would have no revenue, and on a $100,000 house, that's about $34.96.
Right. And there's still potential, maybe potentially, you set. Also, talked to our financial advisor, the interest rates were projected on our tax exempt around 2.5%. He feels they might come in between 1 and 1.5%, incredibly low. So if we say 1% on interest rates, that's about a quarter of a million potentially this year to knock off our debt service levy.
We timed that really well, gentlemen.
Yes.
He sure did.
Not to backtrack, but Keith, was there any feedback from the Farm Bureau on specifically the jail cost first year?
I think there's more or less wanting to know how long it's gonna take to build and be active, and maybe before it brings in revenue, those kind of concerns that, of course, there was also concern about having new administrations, would we have some federal prisoners or not, would they just release them all? You know, I don't know if that's realistic or not, I mean, who knows?
I don't see how that's realistic, and there's also county needs.
Right, oh yeah. There will always be some kind of jail revenue, it's just, will it be 500 beds, will it be 200 beds, will it be 100? We don't know, but we had quite a few different scenarios and projections out there, so.
There's counties like ours that are looking into building, and there's other counties that are looking into asking counties like us for help and seeing how they can house prisoners without building a whole new jail, so.
Well, we could probably serve a pretty big, big region with I-29 and Highway 20 going, you know, two directions in Iowa.
So the, the next step on this would be March 9th, Dennis, between now and then, is the publishing window, is that correct?
Correct. We have to publish not more than 20 and not less than 10. So we're planning to publish at the 25th of February, which meets our criteria.
So you have two action items, Dennis, so final review, is that to approve publishing the budget?
Yes. I believe they'll tail together, yes.
Right.
Yep. And the difference now with being under 2% takes a simple majority compared to over 2% super majority, so.
And Dennis, the, the total amount we've received from cares is around 1.8 million?
Totally, including district health. For the county, where the new cares come out, it'll be 1.5 million. And district health gets about 360,000.
So for county entities, about 1.8?
Yep, yes. And we may get more, depends on what happens in this next stimulus bill, because there is a lot of billions in there for local governments. See how that plays out.
Yeah.
As long as they're in this country.
Yeah, that's right.
On that note, I think, I think that I would ask the public to, you know, because this is, we are reducing the tax rate again in the areas that we can control. The one that we can is what the voters approved. You know, we can say it was only this many voters, but it was the ones that voted, and so their voice has been heard, is heard by this board, and will be heard by everyone living in Woodbury County in regards to building the new jail. And so I think it's a great thing that we've been able to reduce, again, the rate in the areas that we do control. The one that we don't, does have the reality of you can't realize revenue when you're building a, a building. But one thing I'd ask the public to keep in mind as they see their property tax bill upcoming is that, one thing, and that's inflation. So, you know, given the stats I've seen, federal governments created, you could say over, over 20% of the money supply and circulation was created last year. At the same time, the consumer se, inflation rates reported for 2020 is 1.4%. We're budgeting for the next upcoming year. By that time, I anticipate the, even the government published rate will be more than 1.4%. And most of the budget, again, is, we can adjust as far as contractually obligated wages, and so to know that we have reduced the rate, while at the same time, the actual spending has gone up by less than 2%, I think is a good reflection on, on the budget process we've been through this year.
Well, the rollback factor, one thing to consider, did go down on residential, but what was it, 1? Was it 2 or was it 1%?
Probably towards the 1.
Okay.
Well, and as you look at your tax statement, you gotta look at the schools and see what they did, because they can make a huge difference in what you're paying.
So I didn't even figure that out. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, your point is that they're the largest part of people's property tax in this area. The school district is true.
There were 41%, approximately, cities about 41, or about 17, then you have a little smaller, but IA extension cities, that's the kind of things like that.
And if the county is successful in selling the farmland, that would be, that would still affect this budget if it was done before approximately June.
Yes.
Okay. So just to let that be known, without reducing entire departments we're obligated by law to have and services we're obligated to provide, we can't just stop providing things like birth and death certificates to save, to save money. We've done everything, you know, that we can in operating wise, and if there's an extra way that we can reduce the burden, we're going down that path, and we will apply that to the taxes either this year or next year if possible. Are there any comments, suggestions, revisions to the final budget review at this point? Hearing none, I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Radek. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 4-0. Item B now is to approve the notice of public hearing and proposed property tax levy to be held on March 9th, Tuesday, at 4:45 PM. I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Radek. Any discussion on the date, which we can't really change anyway? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes 4-0. I will be out of town and calling into the next meeting, I'll let Chairman DeWitt and Andy from IT know that. Any other comments for your cause? We are adjourned.